Will the city clerk please take the roll?
Here.
President.
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 President. Is there a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
House Attorney.
Here, yes, sir.
Uh, yes.
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 Yes. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, in thy God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our public acknowledgements and commendations. Cranston High School West Valedictorian Alexandra Smith and also Cranston High School East Valedictorian Emma Mahag. Are there any other public acknowledgements and commendations? Councilman Farina, would you like to present the commendations?
Thank you, Council President. I'm proud of my colleagues. So, the last four years, these students have exemplified where it needs to be an ideal Cranston. Through their hard work, dedication, and excellent educational skills, they both obtained something that, if you think about it, only less than eighty people can achieve our city and local young. So, coming on this council, I wanted to get attracted to two city council actually recognized, both valedictorians from East and West, all their hard work. If we all went ahead, if we all went to high school, we all know our hardships, we number one, especially in schools, where more importantly, I don't want anything. So, I will recognize, I know they had for our standing last meeting, the entire council said, "Cheers, congratulations, very best wishes to this number of agents, and express that hope for continued success in all the future events as well." Good for us. Second citation, I'd like to present to Alatan Smith, for our standing last meeting, the last day council, said, "Cheers, congratulations, very best wishes to this number of agents, and express hope for continued success in all the future events." As a side note, Hallie happens to be my niece, so I'm truly proud of her, and I see her through this, and talk through it, so congratulations. How do you want to call them here? How do you want to call them here?
Brown and Yale.
Next item on the docket is public hearings. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on any doctored item? Please limit your speaking to four minutes. Please step forward, give your name and address, for the record, please.
My name is James Secosho. My address is 76 Midvale Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island.
Jim, can you push the button on the thing?
It should light up.
There it is. You wouldn't believe I'm an engineer. Again, James Secosho, 76 Midvale Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island. I was here in front of the council, the last council meeting in June, I believe, in reference to 81 Midvale Avenue. I think most of yous know the house that's been condemned. This house has been condemned since September 2nd of last year. The last time that I spoke at the meeting, I walked out. Mr. Santigata, Mr. Barone, and Mr. Estrada all came up to me and says, "We're doing something about it, we're trying to get this moved." And I've called up, and I've come into the office for the last seven weeks, into the mayor's office, haven't got a damn thing done. I told you people that if I can't get anything done, I would call Channel 12 Susan Hogan. I called her today, and she will be following up on this. I don't know what's happening. We're talking about having a RFP put out. I've got a degree in engineering. To put out an RFP, you need four, five, six weeks to write up the specs, and you're going to need another five or six weeks to review the specifications, then I'm not sure how long it's going to take for the council to review the pricing. But, right now, all I'm asking for is to close up the land. It's just an open piece of land with a house on it that's falling apart. I parked over here on the right side of the building, and there's caution tape around a little hole. I mean, I'd go as far as, you get me the tape, I'll put the damn tape around the property. But, right now, there hasn't been a damn thing done. I was the last person that, I cut the grass, and everybody told me, "Oh, don't go near the grass, we can't do that, you know, it's dangerous." But yet, we've got a bunch of kids in the neighborhood that, you know, they play football, they play baseball, ball goes in, in the yard, what's going to happen? You people aren't looking at a $5,000 or $10,000 bill anymore to take the house down. You're looking at a multimillion dollar lawsuit if one of these kids gets hurt, because this thing has been going on for almost a year, and not a damn thing has been done other than me cutting the grass. Yes? Councilman Sanra.
Council President, I know this is out of the ordinary, but could we take this out of order if I have no objection from my colleagues, so we can get a report from the administration on it?
All right. Rose, will you take the roll as far as taking this out of order?
House Attorney.
Uh, yes.
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 Yes. Continue, Councilman Sanra.
Uh, thank you, Council President, thank you to my colleagues. Could we get a report, Council President, from the administration?
Someone from the administration would like to comment on this?
What's your question, Mr. President?
What progress have you made as far as Midvale Avenue, that condemned house?
Presently, it's being reviewed, the RFP's being reviewed by the solicitor to see if actually we can knock down the house. The house is in receivership, so we're not sure we can do it. We are going to erect a fence around the front portion of the property. The house is secured, it's noticed, and all safety measures have been put in place.
Okay, according to, the fences around the entire property, just the?
No, it's going to be the front of the house.
Oh, it's going to be, it's not there.
Well, they're supposed to do it this week. It's at the front of the house, it'll cover the front, it'll go all the way to the, it'll go the front lawn, to the front of the house, and then in. It's not going to be around the entire property.
Okay, and that'll be done this week, you said?
That's what I hear from building.
Okay, can we keep on, can we keep on, so we can get a date certain?
I will.
Yep. Mr. Secosho, yeah? It's up to you with the council.
Secosho, you make a final comment? Uh, yes. I'm sorry, was that Mr. Barone, or? It's Mr. Barone. Uh, he said that the, it's not dangerous. They've got a house built on trash, on garbage. The house, there smells coming from the house, which is usually methane gas. I do have a background in the trash business also, I own the trash business. And one of the reasons, if you ride by the Johnson landfill, you see these outgas flares, is to burn off the methane gas. And the street itself is cracking, there's a two-inch crack on the street. I don't know if anybody's been by there yet. I call up, people are supposed to call me back, I don't get any response, don't get a damn thing. And I'm going to, if I don't receive any type of satisfaction, I'm going to erect a sign. If this is the way Mayor Fung is going to leave Cranston, what you going to do for the state of Rhode Island? And then, on the bottom, to make it a political sign, don't vote. Excuse me, Mr. Secosho, I don't think we're here to make political statements. Well, it's not a statement, it's a fact. When I say something, I usually follow through with it, unlike other people.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Barone?
Thank you. I didn't say the house was unsafe. What I said was, "We secured the house, we noticed the house." In other words, we put notices on the house that this property may be unsafe, do not enter. I never said the house was unsafe.
The last meeting, you did make the statement that there wasn't going to be anybody in the house. And you also made the statement that nobody should be going on to the land. You've got a little hole out here by Cranston East that you have plastic caution signs on. I'd go as far as putting the caution tape around the damn thing, but right now, as of today, there's not a thing that's happening. The street is cracking, and there's about an inch, inch and a half crack in the street. The cellar itself has got a two-foot drop from where the original cellar was to where the furnace is now. And it's dangerous for somebody in there, whether on the property or in the house itself. But, you know, we're looking at things that may be costing, right now, to rip down a house, $5,000, $10,000. If that house goes down, and it, as sure as I'm standing here today, that house is going to collapse. You're going to take part of my house, half of the street, and two other, three other houses around it. You're not looking at 10 grand anymore. You're looking at a major, major lawsuit. All right, thank you, Mr. Secosho. What we're going to do is, I'm going to refer this to Safety Services Committee, Monday, August 4th, and that'll give the administration time to see if they put up the fence, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All right? Thank you.
Mr. Council President?
Yes, Councilman Lucido.
I'd like to follow up on that, through the chair, to the solicitor. Are there laws in our codes where we could take that by eminent domain or something, and take care of the problem more quicker than, if that's such a word, than going through this other process?
I would have to talk to the solicitor to see what the receivership provisions are with references property.
But, once it's deemed that it's a public safety hazard, don't we have certain powers through the charter and ordinances to move on this pretty quickly?
I will look into that, and I will get you an answer by Safety Services.
Does our, Mr. Council President, does our solicitor concur?
I just wanted to alert you that the, taking it by eminent domain is a long process, that's not, that would actually lengthen the whole process, and then you'd have to pay fair market value on the property. So, you know, there are certain emergency provisions in the code, I'll work with Solicitor Kershaw and see which ones we can use, but because it's in receivership, you're still going to have to go to the court and get permission to do anything.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to the solicitor, who filed the receivership petition? If you know.
I really don't know.
It wasn't the city, obviously.
No, I don't think so.
So, the court has control of that property, and we technically can't do anything without a court order.
Well, I mean, you would think that the receiver who's charged with managing the property would seek to limit the exposure of his receivership by taking whatever means necessary to minimize liability, so I'd like to find out who the receiver is and go from there.
Have we entered an appearance in that case, or?
I have no idea.
That may be an avenue to attempt to get a court order, because I don't think we can do very much without it.
Councilman Lucido.
Yeah, through the chair to the solicitor, don't we have ordinances on the books where if we have to cut the grass, or, I mean, there've been cases where we boarded properties up, where we put a lien on the property, and then that's charged to whoever the receiver might be? I mean, if that's the case, and we're worried about the methane gas and stuff, at the very least, we should be able to send the fire department or somebody there with the inspectors to see if it's a hazard, and, you know, take care of it, whatever it costs, put the lien on the property, and we get our money later. At least, that'll solve that problem, also, if there is methane gas there. Yes, no, maybe?
I'll look into all the options and have them ready for Safety Services.
Put that on the Safety Services docket for next one.
City clerk, put that on the Safety Services docket for August the 4th, an update on Midvale.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll move on. Anybody else, oh, I have a list here. Tricia Gilmore, public hearings?
Hello, my name's Tricia Gilmore, I live at 4 Pepper Mill Lane, and I'm here to speak about the Pepper Mill Lane expansion. And, you know, we've all made plans that seem great on paper, but in reality, they end up not making as much sense. And to us, this expansion seems like the same thing. Tonight, you'll probably hear many residents of Alpine Estates mentioning issues and concerns, and things that raise a red flag, including the timing of the notices that were sent to residents, which was just shy of the 4th of July holiday, which leads us to wonder was somebody hoping we wouldn't notice. So, at the last meeting, the question was asked why the residents hadn't been involved in the comprehensive plan that was modified five years ago, and that answer is very simple. Many of the residents moved in over the last five years, and those that were there, they weren't aware that these changes were being made. And I agree that legal notices were sent out, and they were probably specified as comprehensive plans, but most average residents don't attend every city council meeting, and they don't know what a comprehensive plan is, and how it can impact them. So, what may have made sense to that comprehensive plan five years ago doesn't make sense now, given the information we have, and that we continue to learn about this issue. Things like the water issues that residents have mentioned, the fact that other landowners in our area and surrounding are also probably going to try to rezone their parcels, and also we have recovering real estate markets, which are, you know, sluggish at best. Many of us that will speak tonight aren't opposed to 20,000 square foot lots, we live on them. But it reaches a point where a neighborhood has to say enough is enough, and a neighborhood can become oversaturated. Maybe there's other areas of Western Cranston that aren't as dense, and it makes sense to develop there. But Alpine has over 400 homes, which is significant for one neighborhood. We all know, if this area is rezoned, it's going to have a ripple effect across Western Cranston. It's going to clog the few access points that we have to the highway, the local single lane roads, and they're not intended to handle all of this traffic. It's going to limit the buffer space to all the industrial zones surrounding us, the green space, and it's definitely going to have a direct impact on Alpine Estates, because we realize that there's potential for over 200 new homes to be built if more landowners come forward and rezone those parcels. And I realize, right now, our schools may not be overcrowded, but with an improved economy, also comes the birth of more children, and with that, comes overcrowding of schools. Add 200 houses to this already crunched neighborhood, and that problem's very obvious. So, in other meetings, Mr. Murray's information gave the residents who live there very little assurance. He used words like possibly, of course, and, you know, we'd be well into the plan before we really know what we're dealing with, and the magnitude of how it impacts us. We don't know what type of sewer systems will be required, what type of water systems will be necessary to accommodate the land, and will there be costs incurred to the residents who live there to tie into these new, more sophisticated systems. Mr. Murray mentioned last time about pumping stations, he talked about the water and how it would run off the land, and that was confusing to us, because as far as we know, there's never been a DEM walkthrough, and I don't know how Mr. Murray would know that. So, we're not attempting here tonight to strip the landowners over their rights to build. We understand, they want to make money and develop the land, sensible. So, we encourage them to build the land, as it has been for the entire duration that they and their family have owned it. They can build at 80,000 square foot lots, they can build one to two beautiful upscale houses, no problem. Come and live with us, it's a wonderful, family-friendly neighborhood, and we enjoy it. But building more than that, rezoning, having that ripple effect, possibly reconnecting to outside Alpine, we're against it. The other thing I want to mention is, the fact that we're raising these issues is not because we're Alpine snobs and we feel like we're above construction. We're actually a group of hardworking people, and we've invested our money to provide ourselves and our families with a safe neighborhood that's nicely nestled into the wooded surroundings of Western Cranston. So, throughout this comprehensive plan, as I decided to read some of it, it mentions the goal is to recognize differences with varying approaches to growth management, while protecting existing neighborhoods. It mentions balanced growth in Western Cranston. It mentions applying smart growth policies and reinforcing Cranston Western's early agrarian history. So, this application that's being presented to you accomplishes none of those goals. It impacts the existing neighborhoods. We don't need it, and we don't want it, and we're hoping that our city council can have the ability to exercise their authority to make informed and sensible decisions on behalf of their constituents, with all of the information that they'll learn, hopefully, tonight, and as we go forward. Thank you.
Sean Gailey.
Thank you, Council President. Sean Gailey, 14 Allen Court, also a fellow resident in Alpine Estates, and I want to second a lot of what Tricia said. You know, with the short notice that was given just before the 4th of July weekend, and, you know, a butters being noticed, notified at that point in time, which was a small percentage, it took us a while to try and put our heads together and figure out what we're going to do from a go-forward basis. So, at our last meeting, we had mentioned, so far, we've been able to retain counsel. We've done a lot of studying of the comprehensive plan, and to second some of the things that Ms. Gilmore had just mentioned to you, it's not only just this five-acre lot of land. Mark Tetra, who will be our attorney, unfortunately, is delayed, we're hoping he's going to get here in time for this meeting, but there are a budding acreage behind Orchard Farm School, and then the farms that are off of Tall Pines, or the back section of Alpine Estates, that could lead all the way up to 100 more homes. Now, under the comprehensive plan, it's also part of the recommendation that these could be zoned as A-12. So, now you're even doubling the amount of homes that could be built. Now, we have an existing covenant in Alpine Estates, which basically is, you know, half-acre lots, and 2,200 to 2,800 square foot homes. So, that's an existing covenant that's in place. But after further examination of this comprehensive plan, there are plots of land that, a couple of years ago, tried to get pushed through off of Hope Road, off of Pippin Orchard Road, and that whole entire area. And we honestly believe that there's going to be a large cascading effect, that if this little five-acre section here, 5.77 acre section goes, suddenly, we're going to have hundreds and hundreds of acres of land in Western Cranston, they're suddenly going to get rezoned to A-20 and A-12. So, now, if you're talking 1,000 homes, two kids per home, 2,000 kids in Western Cranston, police, the cost of fire, traffic lights, traffic density, all that type of fun things that occur. And I was reviewing the Phoenix Lodge vote, and Council President Lanny, you made a great point, is that we need to build our tax base here from a business standpoint, not a residential standpoint. Now, where I live, I pay approximately $9,000 in property taxes. I have two children that are in the Cranston school system. Now, my understanding, I believe the average cost to educate one of our children in the Cranston school system is somewhere above $10,000 or $11,000, or higher than that. So, you're talking about what is going to be the cost to the taxpayers. And I know Senator Lombardi, who sat on the school committee, is here, would probably even further emphasize the cost on a per-student basis of the cost that could happen. Finally, from a personal standpoint, in Alpine Estates, the traffic density that we already currently have with 400 homes, and the amount of time it takes to get out, having Orchard Farms abut Alpine Estates Drive, we now have tons of children that walk up and down Alpine Estates Drive on a daily basis, going to school. There's a safety issue. Just, I believe it was five or six years ago, they had to repave Alpine Estates Drive, going to another cost that there is to the city. I believe the city ended up having to pay for the repavement of Alpine Estates Drive. I don't know what the cost is, I'm sure it was a couple, $100,000, maybe $200,000 in taxpayer money to go to that. You start building 200 houses, and you've got 50-ton trucks coming up and down Alpine Estates Drive again for the next five years, who's going to pay to repave that street? Who's going to put a traffic light at the end of Alpine Estates Drive and Situate Avenue, because the density of the population there is probably going to require a traffic light? Then, all the other additional costs that are going to there. Finally, and last, which is kind of a selfish notion, is that Alpine Estates was hit very, very hard when the market crashed. We saw our homes collectively, our neighbors, lose 40, 45% of the value of our homes. We've actually experienced a small recovery in our neighborhood. Add 200 homes to that inventory, then suddenly, we're going to start losing the value of our homes again, losing tax base to the city, because the reevaluation is going to have to come through. So, there are many aspects that come into this. And finally, one last thing that I would like to say is that in the subcommittee meeting, there was a statement, and I have it, and it was stated earlier, that, you know, Councilman Stychos had mentioned, "I took an oath to uphold the law, and the law says we're supposed to approve this plan." With the Phoenix Lodge issue that happened, although Mr. Stychos and Mr. Bottson here, they both voted against that, but thirdly, Councilman Favecchio also voted against the Phoenix Lodge plan, which was approved by the comprehensive zoning. So, therefore, I guess if that argument worked at that point in time, I would hope that that same argument would here, and I truthfully ask that we unanimously vote down this ability. And finally, last note, as an organization, and I'm kind of the semi-de facto speaker here, we are more than willing, if there is litigation pending following this vote, and it is voted down, that we are more than willing, as an organization and as a neighborhood, to step up as an intervener and assist in any way, shape we possibly can to prevent this from happening, not only for Alpine Estates, but for all of Western Cranston. Thank you for your time.
Before we go any further, I want to note that Senator Frank Lombardi is in the back there. Thank you for coming to the council meeting, Senator. Our next speaker is Stephanie Caffenberger.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Caffenberger, and I reside at 1 Pepper Mill Lane in Cranston, and I too oppose the expansion in Alpine. One of the major concerns that we have is for safety, for the safety of our children. We paid a significant amount of money to live on a street that is fortunate enough to have two cul-de-sacs. And any given day, there are maybe 15, 20 kids out there playing. And we bought this because we wanted a neighborhood that was conducive to a place where our kids could grow up and have fun. And we're worried that with the construction vehicles and everything else, that it's going to reduce the safety that we paid for for our children. Another major concern is the one-way in and one-way out of Alpine Estates Drive. There's already so much traffic, and I know many accidents that occur there. We would definitely need a traffic light if these homes were built, and I'm just wondering who would have to pay for something like that. Also, I'm concerned about the taxing of the resources, like the sewers and schools, and the wetlands, and other environmental impacts that this may have. We really understand the desire for the landowners We really understand the desire for the landowners to build, and we are not opposed to building per se. We are opposed to the zone changing. So if they want to build on 80-foot, on an A-80, that's more than fine with us, but we are opposed to the building of an A-20. Another final thing that I just wanted to mention is that I and other constituents have called the mayor's office several times to discuss this, and there was no return call, no interest of any sort. So as a whole, again, we are opposed to the expansion of Pepper Mill Lane. Thank you very much for your time.
Burt Carabitzis?
Carabitzis.
I was close.
It's okay. It's a tough one. I reside at 9 Pepper Mill Lane. I want to echo a lot of the same comments that you just heard. Bottom line is this: You have to ask yourselves, are you in favor of further development? And if you are, what is going to be the cost to the city, to the taxpayers? And quite frankly, I know I've spoken with a number of you, and I know that it's a concern. So I know the family also has their position, you know, a land right issue. So I think as a group collectively, we want to find an amicable solution. They could either sell the land to someone who's planning on building on A-80, or the other option, which we're pursuing, is a land trust option. That should satisfy the council's reservation as far as going to a lawsuit and not having a chance of winning. The reality is, there are many land trusts in Western Cranston, and I've done some research. I've reached out to a couple of folks, a Margaret Devoce with the South Side Community Land Trust for some guidance, and also an Ann Garnett, who is a consultant for the Public Policy and Land Trust Alliance. And these people are willing to help us come up with a solution. So I would just ask respectively that you vote and oppose this. We don't need any further expansion for a lot of the same reasons that were mentioned earlier by my neighbors. Reality is, it's something that Western Cranston does not need right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Frank Lombardi. I come here perhaps with three hats on. I come here as the senator in that area. I come here as a lawyer who does quite a bit of zoning work, and I come as a resident of Western Cranston as well. And while all politics are local, and I could defer this to your wise minds here on the city council, I received several communications about this very project. And quite frankly, I put my lawyer hat on, and I try and analyze it from a lawyer's standpoint first. And while we talk about commitment to a comprehensive plan as being one aspect to consider, the other aspect that's often overlooked is not only consistency with the comprehensive plan, but also to promote the general health, welfare, and integrity of the neighborhood. And in this case, as a state senator, I received several communications, all of which were unanimously opposed to this project. And it got me to look at the project, got me to look at the application, and quite frankly, I don't think that that second standard is being met. I mean, when I walk through Alpine Estates or I drive through Alpine Estates, it's currently dense. It's really dense right now if you're to walk there. There's a lot of children there, and so you've got to consider the public health, the public safety of those children. And when you build more, you've already heard that argument, when you build more homes, you have more city services, a pressure on the city services. You have more need for police. You need more sanitation. You need more students in the classroom. You have more students in the classroom. And that's an integral part of your analysis tonight, not just commitment to the comprehensive plan. And so when you're asking folks that live in a neighborhood that pay upwards of $10,000 to $12,000 in property taxes to, you know, the first impression, the instinct is always with zoning is to say, "Not in my backyard." But that's your typical response to all zoning. But that's not the case in this particular case. It's unique to this particular project, I believe, because what you're asking is to take a dense area of high-quality homes, and you're going to add to it seven more homes, which equates into seven times more city services for those homes. But more importantly, I think the most important thing that you have to realize as a legislative body in your commitment tonight is the dangerous slippery slope that you go down. Because think, I want you all to know, you've all been in government long enough, to know that there is a lot more similarly situated properties throughout Western Cranston that are going to come and run to this clerk's office and seek similar relief. And consider that. It's your obligation, it's your commitment to consider that as well. So I urge you, in this particular instance, you cannot approve this project. Thank you.
Hi, I live at 14 Basil Crossing, which looks directly down Pepper Mill. And I also have recognized this domino effect that I see that it could take on the community. I moved to Western Cranston because of this feeling of, you know, almost the branding of, okay, there's going to be lots of trees in the environment and more space between my neighbors. And I have three children on this street, and it looks like things are really going to change. For one, I pay $11,000 in taxes, $11,000 plus in taxes, and I would really like to know what's going to happen when I'm going to fight my taxes because property values will inevitably go down with all the new homes. However, I'm also curious about DEM reports. I find it hard to believe the communities come out, and yet the family who owns this land has yet to even look into DEM reports and bring the findings over to the council. That's all I have to say. I respectfully disagree with this decision. Thank you.
Greg Silva, 16 Pepper Mill Lane, the house at the end of the cul-de-sac there. Really, just want to reiterate everyone else's points. Specifically, there's 10 houses from, when you turn off of Alpine Estates Drive to Basil Crossing to Pepper Mill, there's 10 houses between that stop sign and the end of my street, the cul-de-sac. There's 15 children living in those houses. And as someone alluded to earlier, we're not wealthy folks. This isn't the rich part of Alpine Estates. We're all hard-working people, paid everything we could to move into that neighborhood. Specifically, in our case, I could tell you from the location, when I bought my house, I'm on the end of the cul-de-sac there, we specifically bought it because it was on the end of the cul-de-sac. We were specifically told when we bought it that those were wetlands and they weren't buildable. That's what we were told by the Realtor, by the seller, everybody when we bought the house, and that's why we moved there. And we talk about the safety issues, the water pressure issues. I mean, we have all these problems. What about building a sidewalk? I mean, if you're going to have even more people, or even more cars and more construction and everything else, the kids, like I think Sean was saying, Sean Gailey was saying, you know, kids walking to school. Now, you've got, in addition to the hundreds of cars going up and down that road, skipping stop signs every day, now you've got heavy construction vehicles where they can't even see kids off to the side. You know, if someone's going to build sidewalks on that road, there's another cost. So again, just, you know, just to reiterate, we moved there because it was a safe, quiet place for our families. We were told or expected in some cases that it would remain that way. Now, all of a sudden, you know, four years later, we're being told that our quiet cul-de-sac is going to be a throughway, and, you know, I really don't think that that's right. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this committee. My name is Alex Gemma. I live at 21 Dove Court. It's a two-and-a-half-acre parcel that is adjacent to the parcel of land that is under proposal here for change in zoning. It's adjacent to the north. My primary concern is water runoff. One inch of rain over one acre is 27,000 gallons of water. Cranston averages 50 inches of rainfall per year. That's about one inch of rain per week. 27,000 gallons of water. Where's that water going to go? The land, my land is at 356 feet above sea level. The highest point of the land in question is 386 feet above sea level. That's almost 30 feet difference. That's a pretty steep incline. And that means that that runoff comes down to my property and properties adjacent to this land, not only my land. I know that I have two sump pumps in my basement, one that runs and then one for emergency in case that first one fails. My neighbors have had difficulty because their basements get flooded. There is, part of my land is protected, you know, it protects a perennial stream, and it should. I mean, most of it's not, most of my land is not deemed wetlands, but some of it is, and it should be to protect that stream. It's a perennial stream. There are perennial streams that run through this property as well that's under question. And what I'm worried about is that those streams are going to get quite large with this runoff. Because if you, again, the land can just barely absorb the water now, but if you put pavements and streets and landscaped lands and foundations, there is no place else for the water to go except downhill. And, yeah, you can take measures to collect water, and on this, on the notification that you sent us telling us about this, you know, the 400-foot notification, they have this pretty blue rectangle blotch that's here that actually is a man-made swamp. It is where you took the indigenous trees and shrubs and clear-cut them, dug a hole 60 feet long, 40 feet wide, put a chain-link, steel chain-link fence around it, and collected water, and it's become a swamp. You put the chain-link fence around it because you're trying to protect the wildlife and children from getting, accidentally going in there, getting trapped, falling in. If you look at it right now, you don't have to take my word for it, you can go there. If you look at it right now, it's choked with razor grass, caddie and tails, and reed weed. It's just full with that. I don't want one of those close to my house. I don't want one near me. I mean, it's not good, and it's a swamp. It collects water that's stagnant, has no flow, and so it collects smell as well. So, you know, you may be able to take measures to control the water flow, but I do know, and you might say, well, to me, you don't know what might happen. Oh, you're absolutely right. I don't know what might happen, but I do know what has happened. And what has happened in the past is that Dove Court is on an angle. It has a slope right down to my house from Alpine Estates Drive. That slope is about 15 feet. Alpine Estates Drive, if you're coming from Situate Avenue, has a slope down to Dove Court. And Alpine Estates Drive, from the other direction, has a slope down to Dove Court. So if you're on Alpine Estates Drive and you get to Dove Court, Alpine Estates Drive looks like this, best way I can describe it, looks like this. Dove Court, perpendicular. So the water comes down Alpine Estates Drive, I mean, not the whole length, but a good portion of it, comes down Alpine Estates Drive, these two pitches, goes down Dove Court and heads right for my house. Now, what was done to control that was they put in four catch basins and, that's the plan right here, four catch basins and storm drain line. Guess where that storm drain line drains out to? My land. Just dumps out. Now, how did you get that approved? How could the DEM approve that? How could the city approve that? I don't know. But the pre-engineering got it done. And some other engineering company could get it done again. In this case, that water goes out to my land, and it's a lot of water. That's why I need two sump pumps. I don't want to see this happening. If this goes through and those houses are built and that land becomes saturated, that water is coming down to my land and the people's land adjacent to mine. Sounds kind of selfish of me, but it's also a good deal more than just my land is going to be affected. So I hope that you do not approve this change. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Kent Gladine. I live at 10J Court in Alpine Estates. And my concern really is a torpedoing of property values. We pay very high taxes on both an absolute basis and a relative basis. It's reasonable to expect that prospective buyers would do some analytical comparisons of what they could expect to experience in Western Cranston versus other viable alternatives like Jamestown or Narragansett or South Kingstown. And quite frankly, there really aren't a lot of compelling reasons to live in Cranston if you're going to pay $10,000 or $11,000 in property tax. So I would just ask everyone to consider what the ramifications would be on property values if you relax zoning standards. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Council President, members of the city council. For the record, Robert Murray with the firm of Taft McSally located at 21 Garden City Drive. I'm here this evening with the applicants for the subject change of zone petition for the extension of Pepper Mill Lane. Let me again introduce my clients, Phyllis Brown, Patricia Ionelli, and Lorraine Carlino. They are here this evening as they were at the ordinance committee 11 days ago. This, you know, and I appreciate the thoughts shared by residents, both at the ordinance committee and again this evening, I heard many of the same remarks, and I understand that if it's in my backyard, they have every right to express their feelings. I would, however, feel obligated again just to set forth some facts that are undisputed. Ordinance 6-1401 was presented to the city council in the normal course, was publicly advertised in accordance with your rules and regulations and state law, and a public hearing was held on July 17. Prior to the ordinance committee considering it on July 17, the Cranston Planner Commission, as required for all zone change petitions, rendered a recommendation to the city council, and that was a unanimous recommendation of approval. The basis of that approval is that this ordinance represents an extension of the comprehensive plan of the city and the land use map. It's consistent with both those items, and for that reason, the guide that this city council has adopted, both in 2010 and 2012, says that this parcel, along with 1,300 other parcels throughout the city, need to be rezoned in order to bring them in compliance with that plan. I appreciate the thoughts here, that the ripple effect that this change of zone will have, with all due respect, I really don't see it that way. This is a 5.77-acre piece of land that is presently zoned A-80. We are talking about rezoning it to A-20, which is comparable to every other zone, every other property in Alpine Estates. I understand that we're the caboose, and that's why people are trying to express opposition and shut the door. But in 1986, strike that, when Phase 4 of Alpine Estates, which is that section near Pepper Mill Lane, was platted by a previous developer, right on the city map that I presented to the ordinance committee, it said a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of Pepper Mill Lane. to the ordinance committee, it said a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of Pepper Mill Lane. It says that it is the, for the purpose of having a temporary turnaround for the future extension of Pepper Mill Lane. This is not something that Phyllis Brown and her sisters invented last week. It's been on the record plans of this city since 1986. I can't speak to what representations were made to people when they bought their homes, but if anybody reviewing, the title examination of this area and reviewing the record plan would clearly see that it was always extended, intended to be extended. The, the important thing here is that the land use map that this council adopted and the Planner Commission adopted identified areas in the city where it would be appropriate for different types of housing. And in, and in Alpina Estates, the A20 zone calls for 3.63 to 1 units per acre. This application is absolutely consistent with that, as is the rest of Alpina Estates. The, the 2010 plan that was adopted by this City Council on August 23rd, 2010, that was ordinance 2-10-4, it passed unanimously, called for the same designation that we're presenting you here tonight. It said this should be rezoned for half acre zoning. As you know, through the comprehensive plan process, 2010, that plan was then sent on to the state of Rhode Island for approval. It was sent back with a request for changes and comments after a period of time, on September 24th, 2012. Ordinance number 6-12-7 passed unanimously. It reflected the same proposed land use for this parcel at the end of Pepper Mill Lane as it did in 2010. A total of six members of this City Council between 2010 and 2012 supported that comprehensive plan. The state finally approved it after your approval in September, and the final approval was October of 2012. The bottom line, Mr. Chairman, is with all due respect to the neighbors' concerns and many of the comments they raised tonight are just premature. You know, people say that I'm talking in equivocation. I'm telling you that all that's being considered tonight is the rezoning. Questions about wetlands, questions about runoff, questions about engineering designs, all that are appropriate. It's another night, it's another, it's another forum. Tonight, respectfully, I suggest the City Council is charged, under the Rhode Island law, with bringing the zoning ordinance and zoning map in compliance with your comprehensive plan. People have paraphrased Councilman Stychus, who I'm sorry is not here tonight, last time at the ordinance committee. And if you asked me before the evening which councilman would not support this application, I would have bet my, bet the ranch on Councilman Stychus, because I respect him, but I've watched him operate for many years. I thought for sure that he would have voted against the ordinance. I commend him. He, you know, the fact that he referenced the oath, you've all taken an oath and you're all well-considered people, and I respect all of you, but you can't just implement the oath when it's easy, when it's not politically unpopular. You have an obligation under the law in numerous sections of the law, and I've sent a letter to both Mr. Quinlan and Mr. Kirshenbaum citing those statutes, that each municipality is supposed to ensure that its zoning ordinance and map are consistent with the comprehensive plan. If you, if you, if you want to uphold the law this evening, then you must have vote, most, must vote affirmative on this. The issues that many neighbors have talked about are germane, but they're not germane tonight. And, and with all due respect, we are not, you know, this is not starting a ripple effect with any of the lots in Weston Cranston. Those things come forward on a case-by-case basis. This is a isolated parcel of land, no access to anywhere else. There will be no other connections to Plainfield Pike, Dove Court or Al Court. This is an extension, which right now, because I thought I had to, I presented you a small conceptual plan, which showed six or seven lots on it. In all honesty, when we're done with design and everything else, I suspect that we'll end up with something less than that. But the bottom line tonight, the only question you have to ask is, is this ordinance consistent with the comprehensive plan that this City Council approved as late as September of 2012? If you conclude that it is, and I suggest that it is, you know, unfortunately, you're obligated to vote in the affirmative. What happens after tonight, I can't speak to that, but I, I will tell you that legislative actions get wide authority by the courts, but when it's in the area of land use decisions, your decisions must be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I thank you for your time. I'm, I'm sure there are no questions, but I'll be happy to answer any if there are. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in the public that'd like to speak on any doctored item? Please step forward, give your name and address to the record.
Good evening, Paul McDonald, 21J Court. Probably one of the last ones to speak about this. I waited till the end to see exactly what was gonna be said. All due respect to the last gentleman, things change. You know, he's saying that the precedence, precedence was set from your previous council meetings back in 2012. Well, I don't know about you, but I'm a better person now than I was in 2012 because I have more information and I've grown. Same thing happens here. It's not a black and white issue. It's not, in 2012, we told you this was gonna happen. The economy's not the same. The people are not the same. But one thing I can tell you is you have 400 families who have put you people in position, and that's who you're representing, is us. Not just what the law gives you a precedence for that was back in 2012, or back when Alpina Estates was first conceived. Things have changed. And a real major concern for me is there are children in that neighborhood who are handicapped. One in particular that I know of on Alpina State Drive, that this will impact. They have to take a school bus special in the morning and in the afternoon. And we don't have any sidewalks. I moved here from out of state. Beautiful area, I bought, said you can't lose on this investment, spent extra money, and then the, the market tanked. Not your fault, but the market tanked. So now I'm sitting on a house where I'm probably down 100, maybe $150,000. You add more surplus to that, it doesn't just affect me. What about the people over in, across the street in Castleton? Go talk to them. And they have a cut through on their street that drives them insane because it's the Indianapolis Speedway. If this family wants to grow the limited amount of houses, that's fine. But you can't change and allow them to go more, because then you're gonna have another lawyer come up here and say, precedence, back in 2014, you guys changed for Alpine, for this 5.7 acres. So you have to change again. So it does affect more than just this one piece of land. I don't begrudge this family one bit. I'm a small business owner. They want to grow, they want to get something out of their investment, that's fine. But under the guidelines that are in place, not to change. We've all changed since 2012. Please hear the 400 families. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that'd like to speak on any doctored item? Hearing none, this section of the public hearing is now closed. Are there any doctored resolutions?
There are none.
None? Audit Committee, Audit Committee Chairman Aketo.
Thank you, Council President. We had one item, an ordinance, 6-14-01, ordinance in amendment of Chapter 17, Dakota City Cranston, 2005, entitled zoning, change of zone, extension of Pepper Mill Lane. This came on a committee with a recommendation of denial. Council President, I believe it was four, in that affirmative and two against denial.
Kent, Councilman Osito.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to deny the application for the change of zone.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Vivekio.
Thank you, Council President. I've been listening to all of the people speak, and I, and I certainly understand their concerns, but a couple of things come to mind. Number one, this isn't really a change, we've already enacted the comprehensive plan. So, the zoning technically, I believe, has already been changed. We're just moving to make the, this parcel comport with the ordinance that we passed in 2012. So, I, I don't think we're really, we're, we're making the change on the record, but we've already made the decision, fortunately or unfortunately. And as an officer of the court, I don't know that I can support something that is gonna violate our own ordinance and charter and state law perhaps, and certainly cost the taxpayers money because, in certain litigation. The other thing I've noticed is that in looking at the plan presented by Mr. Murray, some of those lots are 40,000, 43,000 square feet, 37,000 square feet. There are some very large parcels in there. And as it presently sits, three parcels could be, three houses could probably be built with ease at 80,000 square feet. So you're really talking about the difference between, between three, maybe seven. My hunch is, I don't know that Mr. Murray would get seven, maybe he'll get five. So you're really arguing about a couple of lot difference with regard to this zone change. And I was glad to hear some of the speakers talked about maybe purchasing some of them. Maybe a deal can be worked with the developer to the, to buy a couple of the lots and let them build the three that they were already entitled to build. I, I think we have to make decisions based on what's presented before us. I don't know that any access road could be built to Pippin Orchard Road or to, rather, Plainfield Pike. There's wetlands right adjacent to this parcel, so the likelihood of being able to put a road through there, I think, is really very slim. Knowing, having done some zoning work and some, having some dealings with DEM, I, I don't think they'd allow you to pave over a wetlands. And certainly if there's a brook, I think you'd have a problem. I'm not even sure that that's zoned residential. I thought it was zoned commercial. And I'd like to ask, I don't know if the solicitor knows through the chair, does the solicitor know whether that adjacent parcel is commercial? I do not know that. I know there's a large piece on the other side of the wetlands, but I think that there's probably a solution to this problem, but I think we have to separate this process from the, the lengthy process that Mr. Murray would face going forward. And where you'll have an opportunity to maybe resolve this issue or litigate it for, for quite some time. But I think that if we deny this and go against our own ordinance, that we are, we are likely to incur some large legal bills on behalf of the city or the taxpayers, just to try to address your concerns. Most of the parcels in that plat are smaller than some of the lots that have been, being proposed by Mr. Murray. So I don't, I think, I'm trying to compare apples to, to apples. And I don't, I, I know that it's an inconvenience when construction takes place, but I cannot support a denial when I know that it's certainly gonna cost us money.
Council Vice President Farina.
Thank you, President Lanny. Sadly, I wasn't able to make the committee meeting last week. I had to travel for work. But when I look at projects like this, you know, I don't look at what we all pay in taxes. I don't look at the validity of the house values. I look at issues for every project that will hurt the area. I look at density. I look at, you know, through ways, there's one entrance and, one entrance and one exit to Alpina Estates. I look at things like that, water, how it's gonna dissipate. Those kind of things, I feel, make it a project, you know, to go up or down. And that's why I second the denial, because looking at those issues, until we solve for them, we shouldn't expand Alpina Estates because of its density. If this was to happen in any other plat, in any other part of the city, I would approach it the same way. Whether it's Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 3, Ward 4, Ward 5, Ward 6, it has nothing to do with the actual value of homes or expanding, expansion of property. It's about the issues that make this a project that's not feasible right now. And realistically, I know a lot has been talked about, you know, what the law is and what the comprehensive plan is and what our responsibility is, but I wasn't on the council in 2010 or 2012. I didn't vote in the comprehensive plan. Had I been on that, that council, I would have voted against the comprehensive plan because I feel A80 is a good parcel of land in, in Ward 4. There's a lot of dense, lot of dense houses in Ward 4. It, we're supposed to keep it rural, keep it agrarian, keep it that sense of farming community that it's been for the last 50 years. And there's a clause in our laws and our rules on this council that says the City Council has final authority over all zoning matters. I'm gonna say that again so everybody can hear it. The City Council has final authority over all zoning matters. That one sentence in our rules would supersede any rule any prior council made. So, that's why I'm gonna be voting against this project in its current form.
Councilwoman Lee.
I, I agree with Councilman Farina. It, it, it seems like the comprehensive plan was put forth a while ago, and like the gentleman said earlier, we are wiser than two years ago. And we have a lot of feedback in the area that we hear of people's wet basements and issues they have of flooding. And I think that some things that looked good on paper back when the comprehensive plan was being put through, with the feedback we get from the community, might not be as good of an idea. And it is called a comprehensive plan, it's not a comprehensive mandate. So, I feel that it would be unwise to not take the time to wa, to go over it as each of these issues comes up. We don't just make the comprehensive plan because we're under the pressure of the state to have a plan in place and then change all the zoning all at once. That would be rash and, and short-sighted. So this is why we have this process, and, and the process should work. So, in this case, I feel that it is unwise to increase the density right there and some of, and I'm gonna vote against it. Thank you.
Councilman Aketo.
Thank you, President Lanny. I want to thank every, all the constituents and all citizens, residents of Cranston coming out tonight. Glad you came, you enlightened me on a number of issues. I, I want to say I take disagreement with, with a friend, Bob Murray, who I respect immensely. Bob says the only question before us is that this request to, to change the zoning from A8 to A20 comply with the comprehensive plan. And I disagree with him immensely, because as Senator Lombardi has stated, as other individuals have stated, we, we have a higher calling here. We have a duty to protect the citizens' health, welfare, and pursuit of happiness. And, and I think many would be unhappy if this passes. I'd also like to say, I agree with Mr. McDonald. The comprehensive plan is, is basically a general outline, and it, it's like, like anything else, it's elastic. It changes, and times change, and sentiments change, and this council needs to, to, to change with those requests and those sentiments. We shouldn't be locked in. We should not be locked in. So I'm not gonna support this. I will be voting to deny, and we'll hope it's denied. Thank you.
Councilman Osito.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. First and foremost, I want to thank the residents, and something that Mr. McDonald said resonates with me, because it should be resonating with every elected official, whether you're elected at the City Council, the School Committee, the state, governor, wherever. You're elected to represent the people, and it's very obvious here. Okay? When I have to make a decision on technicality as the law or upholding what the people want, I'm gonna be with the people all day long. So, I want to thank the neighbors for coming out. I want to thank them for organizing and, and bringing the issues forth, and I want to make a motion to move the question.
Before we move the question, may I make a comment?
Absolutely.
First, I would like our city solicitor, Mr. Quinlan, to interpret what the comprehensive plan and how it affects zoning.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President. The question really comes down to when is a town or city required to bring its zoning into compliance with the comprehensive plan? And Mr. Murray, in a letter to the lawyers for the city, has pointed out the eighteen-month period within which the statute says a council should bring its comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance into compliance with each other. However, this was checked in a, or tested in a case, West versus McDonald, a Rhode Island Supreme Court case, where they said that the eighteen-month language was directory, not mandatory, meaning that the council is not required to change within eighteen months and make the zoning ordinance consistent with the comprehensive plan. The law does specifically provide, though, that you cannot change the zoning on a parcel of land after you adopt a comprehensive plan and make it something that's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. This is just whether you're required to, you bring your plan into consistency with the comprehensive plan and what timeframe you have to do it. The court looked at this in West versus McDonald in East Providence and held that the language from the statute was directory, not mandatory. So, I still believe it is within the city council's discretion to approve or not approve the present request before it.
Thank you, Mr. Quinlan.
My only comment is, and I said it at the ordinance committee meeting, this city council is not a rubber stamp for any department of this city. The planning commission thought or thinks that we're going to rubber stamp their decisions. They have an awful lot to learn about city government. I will be voting against this also. Clerk, please take the roll on the...
Moving the question.
Motion to...
Move the question.
Move the question.
Is it a motion to deny vote?
No, no.
Move the question, yes. Move the question.
Councilor Aketel?
No.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Now, clerk, on the main motion, is there a... Yes, yes, voters to deny. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. No. Yes. Yes. All right, the ordinance is denied? We'll take a five-minute recess. Take your seats. Counselors, please take your seats. Counselors, please take your seats. Please take your seats, counselors. Yes, Senator Maria, that's you. All right, finance, finance committee is next. Vice President Farina.
Thank you, Council President. First, on the finance committee met and approved the following unanimously: resolution to authorize real estate intangible tax abatements.
Motion to approve.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilman lead you second then?
I did.
Yes. All right, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
The finance committee met and approved unanimously a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements.
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
That concludes the docket for the finance committee.
All right, claims committee, Councilwoman Lee. Information report.
This is just a report of the settled claims. Do you want me to read them all or do you want me to just sum it up?
Just make a comment on them. We don't have...
We had a few mailbox claims and some vehicle damage claims. Nothing over a thousand dollars that was settled. And most were, actually, they were all under two hundred dollars. So, very reasonable claims. That's it.
Thank you. Public hearing on, anybody from the public that would like to speak on any undocketed item, please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Hi, Andrew Vose, 35, Redbonne Court. Actually, I just have more, just a question. Andrew Vose, V-O-S-E. Actually, I have a question regarding the property revaluations. I got a letter today. The guy came to my door wanting to come in and I denied him access because I said nothing's changed since last time and I don't want people walking through my house. I got a letter today saying that this process requires that all dwellings within the town be measured and inspected. And my question was, I thought this was voluntary, that I had to let somebody in my house. And I'm just looking for a clarification.
It is voluntary. From the administration or...
And then the letter also gives me five days to comply with this letter of making an appointment for an inspection. And I want to know why that is. Why, am I ordered that I have to let someone into my house?
Mr. Lopez.
Council President, may I approach the gentleman to see the letter, please?
Sure, go ahead. Yes, continue.
Thank you, Council President. Sir, you are not required to let them into your home. However, the caveat with, to that is that they will do an exterior evaluation of your property.
Right, which they did.
And, and then whatever that assessment is, if it is not accurate because of something that they can't see on the inside, you'll have to deal with that at the proper time.
No, and I understand. And, but, you know, to me, this letter is, you know, trying to force me to, you know, I don't know if they're going to show up with a SWAT team to kick in the door or something, you know?
No, no, no.
The way this is worded.
No, no, sir. You can...
No, I know. I'm just, I'm only kidding.
You can sleep soundly. You can deny them and just not let them in.
Okay. But what is, nothing's changed. It's just, I think, the, I don't know if the city sends this out or if the Vision appraisal sends it out, but they might want to change the wording.
We will let them know of your concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak on any undocketed item? Yeah, seeing no hands raised, public hearing section is now closed. Election of Officers. The zoning board reviewed the appointment of Paula McFarlane as the fourth alternate. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. The reappointment of Lori Carlino as the second alternate to the zoning board.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. The reappointment of Christine Cole to the zoning board.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Report of city officers, I'm sorry, Cranston Public Library Board of Trustees, the reappointment of Jack A. Tragar. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Reappointment to the Cranston Public Library Board of Trustees, Rosemary De Silva.
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Any report from the city offices?
I have none.
None? Executive Communications report on hiring special counsel consultants pursuant to chapter, to Charter Section 15.05. Secretary Schombach?
Thankfully, I am unaware of any, hiring of any special counsel in the past month.
Well, don't hold your breath. Request to be continued in service. Lieutenant, Director Barone, would you like to do the honors?
Thank you, Mr. President, Honorable Counsel. In compliance with the fire department pension ordinance and anticipating his 57th birthday, he, he respectfully requests continued service for one year as of July 22, 2014, to be continued through 2015, July 21. He has completed and met all the physical requirements and the administration urges passage.
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Vivekio.
Just, well, point of order, Council President. I don't, I don't know if we enunciated his name. It's Lieutenant Kevin Ansley, I presume. I didn't hear the name.
I thought the president said that. Yes, it's, I'm sorry. It's Lieutenant Kevin Ansley.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Setled claims by the solicitor. He has a time, he has trouble with some of these names, so I'll say them for him. Teresa Panekia, Engemel Law Associates, $30,000 personal injury. Rosari Acosta and Fay Law Associates, $1,075.95 personal industry, industry, injury. And that's for informational purposes only. Council President, communications. Legal expenses analysis. From 7/113 to 6/3014, that's one year. Five hundred and $453,992.96. Almost a half a million dollars. One year. And that's not counting what's happened between June 30th and today. So, we're looking at $750,000 by the end of the summer, best guess. And I looked at some of those cases and they, and I'm saying, why couldn't they have been settled out of court? Why do we spend this kind of money on lawyers? With the exception to my solicitor. But, that bothers me. The other thing that's bothering me also is I got a letter from the ACLU. They want to, they want us to do an investigation concerning what happened when that poor six-year-old kid, boy died, oh, he was beaten to death, a few years back, concerning police procedures. When I was interviewed by a reporter concerning that, I said, "Right now, Cranston Police Department is going to throw an investigation from the state police." I don't want to see two investigations going forward in this city at the same time. We have enough problems handling one at a time. But I leave the door open. When the state police investigation is concluded and this council finally, and I say finally because we know nothing, gets the results of that investigation, and there's any indication, as far as I'm concerned, the irregularities in the police department is how they handled this particular case, I will urge this council to go forward with an investigation. Those are my comments. Now, moving forward, council member communications. Anybody from the council who'd like to speak in? Council, Senator Maria.
Councilman Stikos on there first. Do you want to skip his because he's not here? Council President.
Actually, I, he asked me to speak for him.
All right, Councilwoman Lee.
Councilman Stikos wanted to get the progress on the communications with Capian and Otto Corporation and whether they're going to fulfill their obligation to put in the extra trees.
Okay, Councilman Osito.
I've done some investigation on that myself, made some phone calls. I believe the fault lies, well, I don't want to call it a fault, but I think the issue is that there's some miscommunication between the department of the city and the Capian Otto Properties because they're willing to plant those other three or four trees that they own. As the city hasn't told us where to put those. The ones where Councilman Stikos originally wanted them, those got put up. But now, we're not getting any word as to where the city wants us to put the other three or four trees. So, once we clear that up, I believe Capian Otto Properties will go ahead and plant those trees at, you know, whatever location the city seeks that they're appropriate for.
And I believe we're talking two or three trees. It's not like a forest that we're looking at here.
I'll let him know.
Councilman Senator Maria.
Thank you, Council President. If I may just follow up on your question of the legal fees. There are two gentlemen on here that haven't been on previous reports, Charles Pizzatoro and Christopher Zangare. And as you know by charter, we have to have their hourly rate. So, can we get those for the next council meeting?
All right, I'll direct Mr. Strom. Could you get those legal fees, the hourly rates for the next council meeting?
It was Pizzatoro and Zangare. Also, Council President, I have another constituent here about 81 Midvale. He came late. Can, can I give him a quick briefing on that after the meeting on what happened
Yes.
On 81 Midvale? I will do that for you, okay? Then I have removal, the removal of a truck that's been there for about four years and counting now. Community Fruitland is out of business. And I've talked to Director Barone about this, so I'd like to get on the record on what's, what's transpired since then.
The, Mr. Lombardo is the owner of the Community Fruitland. I don't think they're going to move that truck. What I think they're going to do is register it to make it legal because they use it as storage.
Okay, if that's the case, will they follow up with you on that? Pardon me? Will they follow up with you on that?
Yes.
Okay. Can they at least clean around the truck?
That was done over the weekend, I believe.
Okay, I'll take a look at it. Mike, can you stay up there, Director Barone?
Oh, absolutely, sir.
Unsafe telephone pole, I know. Um, unsafe telephone pole, I know, um, Council Vice President Farina and I saw it firsthand, um, and you saw it when we were marching in the Saint Mary's Feast Parade, little concerned, looks like the Leaning Tower of Pisa right now.
Based on my conversation with National Grid on Friday, that's going to be replaced this week.
Excellent. Um, at a previous Public Works Committee meeting, um, I think me along with a couple of other people had asked for a list of CDBG streets to be paved, uh, there are a couple of streets in Knightsville that Council President and I feel, um, are low income, low to moderate income, um, and we asked, uh, Steph from, uh, CDBG to give us a list, so, I haven't seen it, so that's why I put it on Council Member Communications.
Uh, we'll work on putting a list together, uh, just so you're aware, uh, CDBG money is not released until October, so any of those streets that are eligible will not be touched until after that money comes in, because unlike other programs, we cannot put the money ahead of time to do the project and then reimburse ourselves for that money, so unfortunately, we do have to wait, so we do have a little bit of time to get that CDBG list together.
All right, you're, we're putting it together, Carlos, or are, are they giving us the list? Yep, the administration's putting it together.
We, we determine which roads we're going to look at based on our, uh, program, and then, uh, we see if they're eligible for CDBG.
Okay, so can we have that for next month's meeting?
No, probably not until after September, as we get closer to October, when we know, when we have a better idea how much money we're actually going to get.
Okay, so can we put this on October's docket? Council President?
Council President, can I follow up on that one?
Yes, Councilman Asito.
So, so we're waiting for, to see if the neighborhood qualifies under?
No.
What are we waiting for? Because if not, we could take money from the general funds, fix the streets, and then do a fourth quarter transfer next year.
We're not, we're not doing, we're not doing that.
Okay, wait a minute, though, the, the question, though, originally was, do those streets qualify?
Okay, we will get.
That's the original question.
We will get an answer for you, because traditionally, we have not done any work in the fifth ward with CDBG money, because most of the ward is not eligible, I'm not sure if there's any streets that are eligible according to federal guidelines. Generally, as a rule of thumb, wards one, two, and three have historically been the only wards to qualify for CDBG money.
That's happened for the last fifty years, I, I think that there's certain sections of the fifth ward now that may qualify, but I'll, I'll wait for your report.
Thank you. And last but not least, uh, as you know, through the administration, we worked together on, uh, the constant note through trucking, uh, violations on Macklin Street, um, we actually erected a, a sign, um, telling them they have to go into Qualdor. A couple of neighbors have sent me pictures, uh, that the truckers are completely ignoring it, and took down a tree branch last week, or maybe a couple of weeks ago, so I was wondering if we could get some enforcement there, or maybe a letter to the businesses, um, because it's, uh, and that they're speeding on top of it, but, um, just trying to get the trucks to do what the sign says, do we have to make a bigger sign? I don't know, but, um, I just want to know where the enforcement is.
I will follow up with Captain Quirk on that.
Okay. Can I have a report, uh, can I have it for Safety Services?
Are you looking for a list of violations, or are you looking at their procedure for enforcement?
Actually, probably both. Actually, I'd rather see the list of violations if I could. Okay. So could I, uh, Council President, may I have that for, um, next week's?
Yeah, uh, Safety Services Committee meeting, we'll put that on the agenda. I'd also like to make a quick comment that if they're delivering to a location over there, they can do that, it's not, it's, because I can't think of any shortcuts going through Macklin Street.
The only, um, uh, the landlord testified before us that, um, he was going to tell the, um, neighbors to enter through Qualdor Street. Qualdor Street is the back lot, which they have plenty of room to go down, um, and, and make their deliveries. They're, they're ignoring the sign completely.
All right, well, we'll bring this up to Safety Services, we'll try to straighten it out.
Because Qualdor Street is like, it's big as a football field, uh, and they're able to maneuver, make their deliveries, and turn around and go back out, they're, they're coming in through Eastview, they're violating from all ends. Council President?
All right. Councilman Asito?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I don't know if Solicitor Cursebaum is here, but I wanted to know under what authority the city was giving, uh, Waste Management the right to collect extra money for a bin. And doesn't, isn't there any enablement legislation needed for us before we, uh, have a private vendor collect monies for the city? You all right?
I, I have to be honest, I, I did about two hours of research on this, and I have to sit with you to further hone in your question a little further. From what I understand, I've talked with the administration, we have a, a list of people who could potentially take, you know, trash away, so it's not as if we're giving it to Waste Management or allowing them to collect any kind of fee other than what they would normally charge anyone else, that's just one option, we're not mandating that Waste Management take your couch or your, your mattress or anything like that, it could be anybody, so.
Well, what about the hundred-and-fifty-four-dollar fee for an extra bin, if you needed an extra bin?
But that, all right, that's a different question, I thought we were talking about mattresses and couches and?
Well, that's an next question, but?
Oh, I see, okay. You said you had a theory, I, I, last time, I was interested to hear more about it, but I haven't, I, I did some research on this, I haven't been able to find anything in particular.
Do we know what other cities do? I mean, is there precedent already set that for cities that have trash pickup and are using Waste Management and are using these bins, you know, are they charging, how are they collecting the money? It, it just doesn't seem right to me again, and, um, that we have a private vendor collecting taxpayer money, which I know, it's not a tax, we call it a fee, it's really a tax, you know, so that, I'm just not comfortable with that, so. And then, uh, second question, at what point does the city pick up white goods and items left out that a resident, either it's abandoned house or whatnot, I mean, how are we making that decision on a case-by-case basis, or?
I'm not sure, uh, might be a question about a suit of the director. I, I looked into the enabling legislation and the different areas that you talked about, legalities, and I wasn't able to find anything, but, I mean, if I sit with you later, I'll learn a little bit more about your theory.
Uh, Ken Mason, Director of Public Works. Um, concerning your second question about what does the city, at what point does the city pick up bulk or white good items, um, well, number one, white goods haven't been picked up by the city since, I believe, two thousand nine, uh, that, that has never, that, that's been gone for about five years. As far as bulky waste goes, uh, we have just started, and we started it today, actually, uh, with a, an, a part-time inspector going out and looking at properties that have left bulky items such as couches and mattresses that have been out on the street for more than two weeks.
Like two-twenty-four Oakwood Avenue, one of those locations?
Uh, I'm not sure about that one, but, and what he's been doing is, he's been, uh, putting a violation notice on the person's door, requesting or requiring that they contact a vendor to dispose of those goods.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Council President, may, may I reaffirm my request, um, to the administration that we have some sort of amnesty period? Council President, I know you've, uh, mentioned that too, um, in Amnesty Week, in Amnesty Day, uh, I had a call from a constituent, uh, that they had a party for their son over the weekend, and there are already three bags over the limit. This is going to keep happening, Saint Mary's Feast Society was a perfect example, they're not going to be able to fit the garbage that they, that they put out during these festivals, during, uh, parties, we're going to tell, tell people they can't have parties at home now, because they, they can't fit it in the garbage, or pay a hundred-and-fifty dollars for another garbage can? We need some amnesty days, we still have, we're going to have mattresses all over this fine city.
Director Lopez, we'd like to comment on this.
Sure. Uh, to lose Councilman Santa Maria's point, um, the administration is aware of some of the issues that are, uh, being caused by this new system, but there's a couple of things that I'd like to clear up from Councilman Santa Maria's statement. As far as mattresses and, uh, bulky items like that, uh, the administration is already working with Waste Management to, uh, try to come up with a plan, um, to, uh, I don't want to use the word amnesty, but allow residents to have, you know, to have that stuff picked up, um, in, in a way that's not going to cost them money. So we are working on that, we are, uh, almost, uh, done finalizing that, and once we do get that locked down, we will make a public announcement, and we'll let residents of the city know, uh, when that date will be and, uh, how long it'll last for. So, uh, we are already working on that. On the second, on the second matter, as far as the trash itself and the recyclable bins themselves, um, the sixty-five gallon bins that we've, uh, distributed throughout the city, um, generally speaking, are adequate for what we're, for what, uh, families generate, uh, in terms of trash. It's going to take a little bit of time for families and residents to, uh, get used to trying to stuff all of their trash into these things, but we looked at different cities throughout the state and found that this was an adequate, uh, size for the residents of Cranston. In fact, we've had about fifteen-hundred, uh, people request these smaller thirty-five bins, uh, thirty-five-ounce gallon bins, because some of these bins are too big for them. As far as the families who absolutely positively cannot, uh, crush their boxes, crush their cans, compact their trash to fit into the sixty-five gallon bins, they do have the option to purchase the additional service, which includes the bin pickup and the, uh, mitigation of the increased tipping fees that would be charged to the city, all of that is encompassed in the hundred-and-fifty dollars that they're being charged, which really breaks down to under three dollars a week for, uh, pickup. So, uh, quite frankly, uh, we do have options for those families, um, and I think that we're, we're trying to address these issues as best as we can.
Council Vice President Farina?
Hey, Council President, um, I did have a question as a very important Council Member Communications that I asked the last council meeting, but unfortunately, Director Mason was not here, and since it's regarding trash, and you segued into it nicely, um, the question I had, if fifteen-hundred people basically opted for a smaller bin, we negotiated the contract, assuming everyone in the city would have a sixty-four gallon bin, and fifteen-hundred people now have half the bin, by default, we would have less tonnage going through than we anticipated, so how are we going to build a rebate in to get money back from Waste Management for all that tonnage that has come down? Well, Director Mason, you look confused, but if, if we assumed twenty-six thousand households in the city of Cranston, and we assumed everybody has a sixty-four gallon bin, and fifteen-hundred people have taken half the size of the bin, there's less trash we're going to push through Waste Management, so wouldn't it cost us less? Well, it's going to cost, it's costing us more per, per gallon or per ton, so wouldn't there be a reduction somewhere?
No, if we didn't offer the thirty-five gallon bins, they would have sixty-four gallon bins, and they would only be a third or a half full, so as, the tonnage isn't changing.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, you came before us several times, both the administration, yourself, and you've told us that you think sixty-four gallons was adequate, and the contract was negotiated, assuming everyone would throw out sixty-four gallons worth of trash in the city of Cranston.
No, I did not say that.
That's what the study showed.
That's what the studies that everyone keeps referencing.
That, that the sixty-four gallon carts are adequate for your standard-sized family. If, if, the people that are ordering, that have gotten the thirty-five gallon are typically single-family households, or just two people in it that don't need the, the sixty-five gallon carts.
So how many people have added the hundred-and-fifty-dollar option?
Uh, as of today, there have been one-hundred-and-one households that have paid for and received the additional cart. That's less than one-half of one percent.
How much of that hundred-and-fifty dollars is tonnage? How much is the service? How, so, so Director Lopez mentioned a bunch of different aspects?
It's mainly the cart and the extra disposal and the pickup fee.
So the cart you pay for every year, even though you only get it once?
It's a lease, basically. You can, you can hand it in at the end of the year if you've decided that you didn't need to use it.
Do you think we get a breakdown of those pieces?
I can get one for you.
That'd be excellent, that way we can know exactly what's in the hundred-and-fifty as our constituents call us and request, you know, why there, why there is a hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee, because we've had some differences as we've been talking through this, and, you know, as BoCap negotiated, how much was tonnage, how much was for the bin, how much is for the use of flipping the bin, so it would just be good for us to have that information as they call, we can explain it to them more effectively, so we don't really look like we're doing this. So that's my hope.
Councilman Asito?
Yes. Uh, Director Mason, Council Farina kind of led into this, so we have fifteen-hundred people who have elected to take a smaller bin, so people are buying a second bin, so from an operational standpoint, from Waste Management, so now, instead of just coming in front of the house and taking one, they have to take one, put the arm down, take the second, put the arm down, where if we took some of the savings maybe from the fifteen-hundred bins and gave families a bigger bin, they could just take the arm in one big bin, put it down and be on their way. Um, it just seems to me that it would be more efficient doing it that way with a bigger bin. Second thing I found out was, I was in City Central Falls last week, and they just went to an automated program, and I, I, they just.
Ninety-six, ninety-six gallon bins.
You know, how about that? I wonder, their study must be different than ours.
It's, it's weekly, Director Barone.
The administration would like to say a few words.
Councilman, as, uh, as Director Strom has indicated, uh, it's not fair to compare one, a one-square-mile city with multiple tenements, uh, triple-deckers, uh, it, to, you know, a city like Cranston that has, uh, you know, such residential diversity, uh, it's not even, it's not even close to make that comparison. Warwick has the ninety-five bins because they did it ten years ago, and they had three additional bins, because at the time, there was not single-source stream, uh, streamlined disposal, so they had to separate into bottles, paper, and then, uh, cardboard or different types of paper. So, again, Councilman Asito, that's not a real accurate comparison.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Council President, should we consider this the trash-talking section of council, council meetings?
I thought it was pick on Mr. Lopez.
No, no, here's, here's my concern. When you negotiated this contract with BoCap, it seems to me like they negotiated the contract with us, and, and I may be wrong, and I'm not questioning what happened, but it seems like we pay them four million dollars, and Jeff and I talked in the parade, we pay them on time, every, every month we have to pay them. They seem like they said to us, here's a, here, we're going to give you this, you're going to save two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Did BoCap ask important questions that we're asking tonight? I don't think that happened, I think it was, here you go, we're going to give you through, um, sixty-five gallon tanks, take it or leave it, that was, are there any negotiations for the larger barrels? Because like I said, it was quoted in the paper, we run the show, not trash, uh, not Waste Management. That's how I feel.
Mr. Lopez?
If I can just say that, uh, Councilman Santa Maria, I actually agree with you, you do control it, you guys put people on that board, so if you're not happy with who or what the job that they did, replace them. The power is in your hands.
Mr. Lopez?
Uh, that's, yeah, wait a minute now, tell me the members of that board, how many mayoral appointments on that board? How many?
We have.
There are three Democrats on that board that we appointed.
Correct.
How many did your mayor appoint? Don't blame us for this.
No, 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 I'm not blaming.
Well, it certainly sounds like you are.
I'm not blaming, I'm saying.
Yes, they may have, but you.
If the council is not happy.
Your party have more members on that board than we do, so if it was approved, the majority of members will approve, remember your party.
I, listen, I, I'm not arguing the point, I'm just saying- I, listen, I'm not arguing the point, I'm just saying, if you're not happy, because it was a unanimous vote on top of it. So, they had to go along with it, Council President. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but the facts are the facts.
I'm glad you said what you said now.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Lee?
Well, I guess, I guess it would be for a recycling bin that was a little bit larger, but from what I understand, going to visit the, the dump in Johnston with, with my child's school classroom, we're very close to filling that dump, and, and then what do we do? And what's the cost to all the cities and municipalities when that happens? So, I think, you know, the smaller bin, I don't know, it, it would be nice to be able to throw a number back, say, you know, we're thinking down the road, we're saving in the long run. I, I wish people could think a little bit more of where we're going with this, but it's, it's a hard one to argue. I think changing habits is always difficult. So, anyhow, that's, that's my comment on it. Thanks.
Councilman Lucino?
Thank you. I want to commend the administration. I was at the pickup this weekend, and all the trash cans, I mean, it was run efficiently, and it looks like there's a big pile there. But I have a question. Is that being recycled, and are we getting any monies for those bins?
It is being recycled, and Director Mason can answer the second part.
We're recycling this through Full Circle Recycling in Johnston, and they're giving us $20 per ton of, of materials that we turn into them. If we had, we could have brought it up to the landfill, and they would have given us zero. So, we're getting a little bit.
That's a good point, because now, if we do that, maybe come with another recycling program that we could do with the garage dam, any extra monies we make from recycling, maybe we could buy bigger bins.
Well, I'm guessing that we're going to get all of a couple of hundred dollars out of this. It's, it's not that big a tonnage.
If we had an ongoing recycling program, maybe we could get more than a couple of hundred dollars.
Council Vice President Farina?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I know we talked before about comparing Central Falls to Cranston and Warwick to Cranston, but I will remind the administration that they got up there and said that Providence was just like Cranston, and Providence made it with the small bin. So, as we look at these municipalities that are adding the trash program, you can't just say, well, Cranston is like this city, but not like that city, when we started comparing it to Narragansett and other towns and municipalities. So, as we bring this up, you know, there are aspects of this trash program that this council really doesn't like, and that constituents really don't like. In the whole, I think the trash program has merit and value, but when you're campaigning, and you have a man get in his car and chase you down the street to discuss the validity and the problems with the trash program, there's probably some issues with the trash program. And that's where I think, as a councilman, I'm coming from, as I'm getting these calls from constituents, as I'm fielding them that I have broken bins, and I had a squirrel eat through a bin, I thought these were supposed to be rat-proof, I'm getting those kind of calls. And I will say, the administration is being excellent in facilitating them, and helping us, and making sure we do the right things by the city. And I know, it's new, people have to get used to it, we understand that. I think we all understand that it's new, it'll take time, it'll take effort, we have to get people to recycle more, but there are flaws. And I think if the administration can present to us, as we talked about two months ago, those things like putting a dumpster at the, at the barn, having, I don't want to call them amnesty days, but free pickup days, trying to work on solutions, I think we can stop some of this bickering back and forth. So, I'd love to see some costing, some benefit analysis, some work that says, you know what, if we have this day where we'll go out and pick up white goods twice a year for spring cleanup and fall cleanup, it'll cost us X. That way, we can work with the Director of Finance and say, okay, Director Strom, this is what it'll cost, and we can do this together to make sure we fix the minor flaws that we have in the program.
Mr. Lopez?
First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Farina for his kind words, and I do concur with you, and, you know, look, this council, this, this program is barely a month old, and, you know, the, the call volume to our office has dropped off significantly. You're always going to have that vocal minority that is going to take actions like chasing you down the street, and, look, the, those people are always going to be there. But I think for the most part, the implementation of this program has been successful. There are some kinks that we are aware of, and that we are going to work out, and we are trying to come up with alternative plans to try to satisfy the needs of the, of the, of the city of Cranston and its residents. It's, this is something that's going to take a little bit more time, and to address something that Councilwoman Lee said, one of the reasons why we went to this program is because, quite frankly, the landfill is filling up, it's running out of space, and sooner or later, we're going to have to face the prospect of possibly some other alternative program, which may be multiple times more expensive than what we have. But what I implore to the council is have patience. When you have questions from your constituents, we will try to help you answer them as best as possible, and we will institute alternative programs to help with situations that come up. For example, in Knightsville, to accommodate the St. Mary's Feast Society, we did an extra pickup for those neighbor, for that neighborhood, because we knew that due to the volume of people and trash that people generate, we would need an extra truck. So, we have that flexibility, and we're, you know, we're working on it on a case-by-case basis, but I assure the council that we will meet their concerns and address a lot of the problems that we have.
Quick follow-up, Council President? Very quick.
Sorry, what?
Quick follow-up.
Yes, be brief, though.
Thank you. I know, like, some of those ideas actually came out of sessions with the council, and, and the problems you're going to have is, as we keep going through this and doing this dance, if you don't involve us in some of those discussions, we're going to keep coming back at you, because we're going to keep getting asked, what are the solutions, how are you solving it? So, I just implore you to have some open dialogue with us. You know, I know you said to be patient, but, you know, patience is a virtue sometimes we don't have. So, thank you.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. To the administration, I'm not questioning, I'm not, I'm not questioning the program as much as I want to make sure that you're running the show, because we pay the bill. I want, I just want assurance that they're not telling us how it goes, that we're telling them how it goes. If you could tell me that.
I can assure you that, we do. Yeah. Councilman Santa Maria and Council President, yes, we are in control of this. We will adapt to the needs of the community, and we will make sure that this program runs smoothly.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Vecchio?
Thank you, Council President, I'll be brief. I want to thank Director Mason for the, the program Saturday with the, collecting the recycled bins. It was, I, I was there all of a minute, in and out, so it was run very smoothly, and perhaps maybe you could use that as a model for maybe a quarterly pickup or something, because it was organized so well that it was pretty easy to get in and out, and they picked the stuff right out of your trunk, and it was, and it was gone, so I want to commend you for that, but I think that may be a possible solution.
Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President. Before I ask my question, I just want to preface my remarks. I did a little traveling around the city in my Pontiac, and, and I, I was basically doing reconnaissance in Western Cranston, and I drove along Phoenix Avenue, and I found out from the Gazabo to 295 was paved, which is two and a half miles pavement. Phoenix Avenue, Phoenix Ridge Hillcrest, three tenths of a mile of pavement. Priscilla Drive, only Arnold Road, four tenths of a mile pavement. Angela Drive, half tenth of a mile. Waylon Avenue, five tenths of a mile. So, that's basically, no offense to Councilman Lucino, because I, I understand that, you know, all wards need to be paved, but I will quote a former colleague, Councilman Pelletier, in his first and second terms, bragging on the amount of pavement he had in his ward. So, it seems to be a consistent policy of the administration to pave Western Cranston when wards one, two, and three that receive community block grants, my ward is getting two tenths of a mile on Howard Avenue, two tenths of a mile on Micah, and five tenths of a mile on Marlborough. So, to me, it seems a great disparity, and I would just like the administration to state its street paving policy. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, would you like to speak on behalf of the administration?
Sure. So, I'd like to remind Councilman Arquette, when he was in my office a couple of weeks ago, asking for a special change to the streets that we had selected, that I did go over the plan with you, and in fact, I have an article by our star reporter Gregory Smith, which explains the process that we use. If I may hand this to the councilman, he can review it at his leisure.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It even has pictures.
That's great. Look forward to it.
So, so, if I may, if I may go into the details of the program, it's quite simple. Director Mason and the Department of Public Works has what we call the Street Paving Bible, and that's a giant book that has every street in the city listed and rated based on the condition of the street. What we do is, we look at those listings and take the worst of the worst, and monitor it, and send out our engineer to look at the roads and give us an updated score on those roads. We take that as the base to create a list of what we're looking at. We also take into consideration how money, how much money or how many funds are available per year to do X amount of roadwork. The other aspect of it is based on constituent complaints, or requests, or petitions that we get, and then another aspect of it is, we try to combine areas where the utility companies have, are, or are, are doing work, or are planning to do work, so that way, we stretch the taxpayer dollar a lot further. An example of that is a road that perhaps is having its water line done, and it would, they would, the water utility would tear up 30% of the road. We would come in and say, well, listen, instead of giving us 30% of the value of that just to do a trench, maybe we can do the whole road if we put in X amount of money more to get the whole road done. So, those are ways that we try to stretch the taxpayer dollar to pave as much as we can. The other final aspect of this is, obviously, I take council input into consideration, and whenever possible, we do try to accommodate the council person's request. In some cases, it's not possible, because the project either demands that it be done, for example, Howard Avenue, as I went over with Councilman Arquette, has a sunken drain that is on the verge of collapse, and there's a, I don't know, I don't want to say a sinkhole, but.
There's a barrel over the sinkhole.
Right, there's a barrel over a sinkhole. So, for the cost of just fixing that section of the road properly, for a little bit more, we could do the whole road. Certainly, we've accommodated Councilman Arquette in the past, I've switched roads for him to go to areas that he preferred, and in our last meeting, I did leave it that we would look at the couple of roads that he suggested that we look at, and make the adjustment accordingly. So, you know, I, I hope that provides a brief overview of what we do, and, you know, the Council President has sat with me to review these plans for paving, so I think we've been pretty open and transparent with the council to try to meet their road paving needs. Thank you.
I'm just going to comment, and, and yes, your office has been willing to meet with me and sit down and talk, so I want to thank you for that, but just for the record, you know, Howard Avenue is a very road that's very lightly traveled. It, it's not in the mainstream of, of Ward Three, and it's basically created like a horseshoe, so you could technically pave that one little section that there is a sinkhole, and not connect the other section, because it's like a horseshoe. And perhaps, if you do that, maybe I can get two, two and a half tenths of a mile dire avenue paved from Cranston to the street light where the fire station is, because that is a very heavily traveled road, sewer caps are sinking in the road, there's major potholes. I mean, I, I think the administration should look at that. Thank you.
Anybody else on the council communications? Yes, Councilman Santa Maria?
Council President, may I ask Carlos one more question on, on the great job on Phoenix Avenue, by the way? Now, we're going to put up the school zone signs and the speed limit signs, because that was an issue before with speeding. Now, with a freshly paved road, it's, I want to avoid it from being Indianapolis 500. So, we're going to put school zones from Western Hills to the end of Cranston West, and strict enforcement of the speed limit. Eighteen-year-old kids, for crying out loud, they're going to fly.
Point well made.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Santa Maria, and as, as most of you know, I do keep my word. I promised you that we would get those signs up. Director Mason's here taking the notes, and we'll work on that for you.
I'm a satisfied customer, Council President.
Okay. Councilman Vecchio?
Thank you, Council President. One quick comment, I just wanted to follow up on your comment earlier about the ACLU letter, since they sent it to each of us directly.
It's, it's out of order, because that, that should come after.
Thank you for telling me how to do my job, I appreciate it. But it says here, are there any other council member communications?
I'm on, I'm on for the next one.
Oh, you have one more about a fence?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, I didn't, I thought you were finished.
Okay. Councilman Arquette, get the point.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I think at the last ordinance committee, ordinance committee meeting, I asked the administration, Mr. Mason, the status of the fence on Gladstone Street, and the answer I got was, it was complete, and, you know, I drove by, I checked it out, I had other members of the council also drive down Gladstone Street, and, and basically, there's only about, I would say, 30 feet, 35 feet of new fence there, and the most damaged parts of that fence, where there's major gaps and holes, where the hills is much higher, there's no protective fence there, so I need to hear from the administration as far as what is their long-term plan on how to repair the fence, or put a barrier in front of that fence, because school's going to start in September, and I'd hate to have an elementary school child fall from that ledge.
I'm not sure when the last time you looked at it, but I did have a fence company go out there last Friday, and they did additional repairs to that fence after the new 200-foot section of fence that we had put up. There is one section of fence that is still down, and we left it down because it's at the very top of the, of the hill, of, of the road, and the kids use that as a cut-through to the neighborhood and back. We're hesitant to replace that section of the fence, because the kids do use that, but we did go out there and did some additional repairs to the existing fence, straightening the poles out, and reattaching the, the existing chain link fence to it. I do agree, I think that entire length of fence should sooner or later be replaced.
That's your long-term?
That's our long-term approach, but that's about 800 feet of fence.
I understand.
At $10 a foot.
Right now, as long as you have the poles up and the, the old fence tapped, that's.
Yes, we will make sure, and we will also monitor that fence to make sure that it, it maintains its integrity.
Thank you. One last item, Council President, I have a, a letter from a constituent requesting the administration put an emergency no-parking sign up, and I just want to submit that to them. Maria, could you email Mr. Barone with this letter, because he said it's very difficult for him to read this, so tomorrow, could you e, could you email Mr. Barone this letter, because he has difficulty reading this type text?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to follow up on your, your comments on the ACLU letter. I, I. Um, I, I, I believe that the, the letter was so self-serving, I was disappointed in Mr. Brown and, and the fact that he took a cheap shot at the police department during a, during an ongoing case, um, and using the tragic case of a murder of a six-year-old boy to, um, fi, follow his own agenda, whatever that may be. Um, he took a lower court decision, or what he liked from that decision, which was actually overturned five to nothing by the Supreme Court, um, and used that as a basis to suggest that we do an investigation of the police department on that. Uh, the, the, it's totally inappropriate at this point in time, and I'm sure he knows it, he said it was premature, but it's actually very inappropriate, it would taint the case and actually cause a problem for us. Police departments sometimes make mistakes. Um, the OJ Simpson case probably is the most notable of, of all time, and it was one of the largest police departments in the country, so, um, to suggest that we need an investigation, uh, every time a case is proc, is being, uh, processed through the court system, that's what the courts are for, not for us to order an investigation every time someone says they don't like what the police did. So, I, I think that, um, there was really no need for it, I think it was inappropriate, and, uh, I, I'm glad that Council President doesn't see that any need for it at this point in time, and we already have the state police in there, so, uh, that's all I have to say on that subject.
And I'll repeat myself, uh, this all depends on the state police investigation. Once we, once we're privy to that information, then we'll look at Mr. Brown's case, and if it's, ties in, or there's anything in the state police investigation that suggests that we go further, I would be, not be adverse to going further. But until I have all the facts, I am not gonna jump the gun, so if I remember what my quote was, jump the gun on this. Any other council communications? Old business, is, is there any old business this evening? None? Introduction of new business? Would a city clerk please read and read the new business of the record?
Proposed ordinance seven-dash-fourteen-dash-one ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining extension agreement with the National Association of Government Employees, Local RI-153, for the custodians for two thousand fourteen to two thousand, uh, seventeen, to be referred to finance for hearing on August fourteenth. Proposed ordinance seven-dash-fourteen-dash-two, an amendment of Title VI of the Code of the City of Cranston entitled Animals Pertaining to Roosters, uh, to be heard in ordinance, uh, for public hearing on August fourteenth. Uh, we have two claims that have been presented, Janice Raynon, a property image claim from alleged incident on June eighth, two thousand fourteen, and, um, Gilia Diamanti, a personal injury claim from alleged incident on May twenty-first, two thousand fourteen. And that's all I have. That, that is to be referred to the Claims Committee for hearing on August fourth.
Motion made to second. Any discussion? There are none? Clerk?
Yes. Yes. I just didn't tell it, yes.
Yes?
It's not like freedom.
Yes. A miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk? Okay, the next regular council meeting will be Monday, August the twenty-third, twenty-fifth, I'm sorry. Uh, is there motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are now adjourned.
Yes. Yeah, no, 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 I, I didn't see it, I had to scroll down far enough.